Oh, it was, it was not good, not good. Jeff?
Hello?
It's a call soon as Jeff sits down we'll start.
Thank you. Hey, if we don't, if I don't sit down, you won't start?
It won't start with you.
Don't start with me.
Good evening. Like to, a call to order, the regular city commission meeting of Tuesday, August fifteenth. And if we could start by all joining us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item is the approval of the agenda. I would like to make one addition to the agenda under number six A. We're gonna have a discussion regarding the eleven mile road easement property that we're looking to grant, piece of property that we've been talking about for several months, actually almost a year.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve this evening's agenda with the addition of item six A, eleven mile road easement.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approval of the minutes to the regular city commission meeting of July eighteenth. You have a motion to approve? Mr. Mayor, so move.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Communications. Couple here, any, any comments on them? Notice we, we did receive a couple of checks from the Huntington Woods Men's Club. One for the aquatic club timing equipment for almost fifteen thousand dollars. And also funding for the preschool program, two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. So, thanks again to the men's club for their generous contribution to the, to the community. Okay, hearing nothing else, I see our county commissioners with us this evening. Commissioner Zack?
Good evening, everybody. Wanted to let you know that Oakland County is still working on their DNA lab, and this is a big deal. Presently, whenever there's any type of DNA test, they have to go to the state, and there's like a four to six month backlog. So Oakland County has invested in a new lab. It is accredited, but the one thing is that they're still not able to put the results into the federal system yet. And I'm told that within a month or two, once they can do that, it'll be fully operational and live. And this will expedite all sorts of legal transactions in Oakland County. And as it gets going, you know, maybe we can service other neighboring areas as well. We approved the expense of purchasing software for the sheriff's department, which is called a Vertra Video Training. And what this is, it's the state of the art, like virtual reality active shooter training module. And it will be made available to all the cities, villages, and townships in addition. So, I'm glad that the county, you know, and this happens often, is that the sheriff's department, the county, will purchase these and then train the trainer and open it up to our cities. We all know that there's an opioid crisis. You know, I was at another neighboring city last night that was recognizing their police officers were administering, I think there were three or four different NarCam events, where this is the medication where you give it to somebody who's taken an overdose and it revives them and saves them. And it's very dramatic, and we use it way too much in our community in Oakland County. I hear about twenty-something going on in the city of Novi. So there's, it's an equal opportunity drug. One of the things that Oakland County is doing to address is that they're starting to map it throughout the county. So if you could see where it is, you know, through the public health department, you know, we can start to strategically address it more. Additionally, part of our substance abuse funding comes through a liquor tax, the convention facility tax, and it comes into the county, and we did receive some additional funding that goes into now our Oakland County Health Network. And some of this substance abuse funding's going to be put toward more opioid response. So, we're working on it. Oakland County's getting ready to open the new animal care center. I am taking a tour next week. I'm looking forward to the new building. I'm told it should be online, I think in September, and there will be future open houses for people to see. Again, this is the first new building that we've built in Oakland County in, I don't know, fifteen, twenty years. We moved the very archaic animal care center, which is on Brown Road in Lake Orion, next to a closed down trustee camp into the county campus. And we are selling that property, which is worth something. And by moving it into the county campus, it'll be easier to adopt animals. There's an employee walking program. We're partnering with Children's Village more on animal care. There's lots of really positive things that will happen as a result of this new building. And also have the best practices about housing. I'm told that there is going to be free G I S systems that will be available to all communities, that will, you know, offer predictive analysis on structure. And if you haven't heard about it, it's coming, and there will be training for it. And again, this is another county offering, and I really feel that part of the county's duty is to offer some of these collaborative tools so that we can operate more effectively in our cities, villages, and townships. Finally, there is, I don't know, the umpteenth mental health task force through the state of Michigan. I think since I've been commissioner five years, I think there's been about four or five studies. But there is another one that is being chaired by State Rep Clint Kestoe and somebody from the west side of the state. They're traveling around doing town hall type meetings, particularly looking at the issue of mental health and criminal justice. And I am going to be one of the speakers in this day, this couple hour event, that is in a week or two, you know, talking about what's going on in Oakland County. And we have been very progressive with what we can do as far as having crisis intervention team, jail diversion, you know, doing some creative things, but we still don't have enough resources for individuals. So hopefully, something good will come out of this go around. Any questions for me? Yes?
Yeah, just, hopefully, with the G I S system, the county might make available to cities such as Huntington Woods additional funds so that we can upgrade the quality of our computer equipment relating to that, so it can be standalone as well as at the county level. And SEMCOG also has data now at the parcel level on every single property in the city.
So, if you would keep me posted about equipment, you know, if we need to upgrade, whether it's-
I can do that.
You know, looking at that and say, what are the needs as it relates to this?
No problem.
Whether it's something that we can look at and collaborate-
Anything to save money, that's it.
Oh, anything to bring money back into the cities, villages, and townships, as we all know, which are underfunded. If there's things that the county can drive services here and, and technology-
Well, the county has an excellent planning department that is well-recognized, and it complements what SEMCOG does, and it just would be, I think, useful to, to our planners as it relates to their programming and the development in the city.
I think the county has an invested interest in making sure that we are developing the best way and planning, so there's argument for it. So, please keep me posted, see what I can do from my end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now's the time for public participation. This is an opportunity to speak regarding a non-agenda item. Do we have any? Seeing none, public participation is closed. We do have a proclamation this month proclaiming the month of September two thousand and seventeen as National Recovery Month, and I believe this is an important enough issue that I'm gonna read the entire proclamation. Commissioner Zack touched on this a little bit in her report. "This proclamation of the city commission of the city of Huntington Woods declaring September two thousand and seventeenth to be the National Recovery Month in the city of Huntington Woods. Whereas substance abuse, sorry, substance use recovery is important for individual well-being and vitality, as well as for families, communities, and businesses. And whereas approximately twenty-one and a half million people aged twelve or older had substance use disorder in the past year, and whereas one in five teens abused prescription drugs before the age of thirteen, and whereas last year, two thousand Michiganders died due to an opioid overdose, placing Michigan as the seventh highest number of deaths due to opioid overdose in the nation. And whereas we continue to educate and raise awareness of the risks and potential harm associated with prescription drug misuse, and whereas we believe everyone facing substance use disorders deserves a benefit of recovery. Friday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand and seventeen, has been designated for Oakland County's tenth annual Substance Abuse Recovery Celebration and Walk. And whereas stigma and stereotypes associated with substance use disorders often keep people from seeking treatment that could improve their quality of life. And whereas substance use disorders occur when the recurrent use of alcohol and/or drugs cause clinical or functional significant impairment, such as health problems, disability, and failure to meet major responsibilities at work, school, or home. Whereas substance use disorder recovery is a journey of healing and transformation, enabling people to live in a community of his or her choice while striving to achieve his or her full potential. And whereas substance abuse disorder recovery benefits individuals with substance abuse disorders by focusing on their abilities to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute to our society, and also enriches the culture of our community. And now therefore be it resolved that Oakland County Community Health Network hereby recognize September two thousand and seventeen as National Recovery Month. OCHN shall calls upon our citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our stake to increasing awareness and understanding of substance use and the need for appropriate and accessible services to promote recovery." Proclaim this fifteenth day of August two thousand and seventeen. Thank you. Moving on to items of business. Item number one. It's a matter of consideration of approving banks, brokers, and dealers listing as of August ninth, two thousand and seventeen, to be utilized by the city investment.
Yes, this is an item prepared by our finance department to add Crestmark Bank to our list of brokers and dealers that we can use for investments. This particular case, our finance director is recommending that we use them for our idle funds that we want to invest on a short-term basis. So it would be a change to the listing of brokers and banks where we keep investments.
As per policy.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Support. Any comments or questions from the public? Any comments or questions at the cushion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Agenda item number two did not have anything in our packet, and this is a matter of considering the compensation, composition of the Senior Housing Study Commission. We originally discussed this as having one member from the city commission, two members from the senior advisory committee, and two members from the planning commission. We have had two volunteers from the senior advisory committee. However, the planning commission, there was only one person that was interested in serving on another committee. So, what I'm proposing here is that to fill the fifth position, we appoint an architect, because I was, thought that someone with that kind of a background would be very helpful to the, to the group. And the person I'm recommending was someone that attended our visioning sessions on the senior housing, and also was invited and attended the focus group on the new zoning ordinance. That's, he's a resident of Huntington Woods, Brian Howard. He is involved both in residential and commercial development, so I think he'll have a lot to add to this group as they start bringing some more detailed ideas to the table for, to present to the community and further to the discussion. So, we need a, a motion to change the composition.
To change the composition to allow for the appointment of the architect?
Right, rather than two members of the planning commission.
So moved.
Second.
Do, any comments from the public? Okay, any comments or questions from the commission? I will add that from the senior advisory committee, we had Jim Spear and Lynn Feinberg volunteer, and from the planning commission, we had Michael Wright.
Mr. Mayor, is there a timetable that you're giving these folks?
The next step will be to bring everyone together and pick a, a day of the week that's good for everyone to meet, and then, then start from there. There is no set timetable at this point.
Maybe, I mean, I don't know that you can do it, but it would be nice if there was some target in, in line, or in mind, rather, so that we're aimed at something here, and even for the purpose of preliminary type recommendations or preliminary type, you know, presentation of concept or whatever, that, you know, I, I don't think it's a good idea to just have it be open-ended.
How about, and that's a good point, how about as we, we gather the group together the first time, we'll talk about a target completion date and get some, some input from our city planners as well, because I'm sure there will be things they'll be assisting the group with.
Even though we know this is a long, this will be a long process no matter what, but I think you really need to say, by, by this date, we will have.
It keeps the process moving on.
Yep.
Right. Everybody works better with a deadline.
Okay. Certainly report back to, to the commission with that. Commissioner Jenks?
What's Brian Howard's background as it relates to senior housing gerontology?
I don't know that he has any specific to that field. I, I didn't ask him that question.
How many members of this proposed committee are seniors, sixty-five and older?
I don't, I don't think that's a-
You don't think on a senior housing study, there should be seniors?
But I'm not gonna ask their ages, I don't think that's appropriate.
I don't know the age of the-
Whether there are or not, I'm not gonna, I don't know that that's a important element. That's just, certainly not a requirement to be appointed to any board or commission in the community.
I would just think that you may want to have one or two senior advocates on the committee.
I will point out that all of these meetings will be public meetings, and public participation will certainly be encouraged and welcome. You know, I don't even know what the definition of senior is, in anyone's opinion, but I don't think we, we need to get into that. Claire, did you have a comment? Yeah?
I just wanted to make sure that the meetings were open, and how are you going, are you gonna put them in the Friday?
Oh, sure.
Fan out or something, 'cause I would like to attend some of the-
Yep, absolutely, they will be well-advertised, but we're not gonna pick a date that half the committee can't make, so we'll get everyone together for the first time, discuss, just do some-
Well, that can be announced, too.
Yeah, just do some very basic, after we poll them and see what night everyone's available, I don't know what will work going forward.
But that ought to be announced as well.
Oh, it will, yeah.
And I, I do think that Commissioner Jenks has a good point, because it seems to me that when we look at housing for, at, at elements of housing for seniors in this community, we need to heavily look at how do we get people to allow them to stay in their homes. And so you might want to consider an architect that has senior experience rather than just an architect. So I know you've already talked to this person, but maybe you want to take a step back and see if you can find someone who has a background in aging in place, because that's where all communities are going. And I think that this committee ought to be looking at that as well, so.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would be interested in being a non-voting member of that committee.
That's basically the public, and you're always invited, so.
When it comes to the public, you're very limited in when you can speak. It's at the beginning of the meeting, and that's it. So it's not a real participation. Again, I'll express, I'm interested in being a non-voting member of the committee.
I don't believe that that would be the case at all with regard to a committee working as that senior advisory committee, is that, that they're subject to Roberts Rules of Order, that they're, I mean, they may be at some point in time, but, you know, it seems to me it's about the free flow of ideas, and I, I, I don't believe that there would be any kind of restriction on people, the ability of anybody to communicate, to say anything to the committee, about the committee, or what things they ought to be considering, so. And I think that, that, you know, the, the committee's job is to basically be a sponge for information and ideas coming from whatever source. I don't see any, any rule that would limit anyone's participation there. I respectfully disagree with my colleague.
I think the only time they would ever put such a rule in place on public participation is if they came to the end and had a report and were gonna hold their own public hearing, then in order to be organized-
Maybe if Commissioner Jenks were there, they might-
Well-
Suddenly impose a rule.
I will take your input and my colleague's input, and understand that I can be an active participation with don't, no time limit. Thank you. And that, that applies to everybody else in the community.
You know, there is an endurance factor.
Well, when you join a committee or even a commission, there is always an endurance factor.
The old admonition that the mind can only absorb as much as the rump can endure.
Well, that depends how spongy the mind is. No.
All right, any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The own, and I'd like to express the reason why I do agree with Claire's input that we should have perhaps announced that we're looking for an architect, but also indicated that we would, we would also welcome experience as it relates to senior housing. There's a lot of very, very creative private construction going on as it relates to homes and modifications, and they're both architects and builders that are doing that in the immediate area. And we could have people within the city. I agree with the idea of having an architect.
Okay. Item number three, matter of considering the appointment of a voting delegate and an alternate to the Michigan Municipal League Convention to be held on September thirteenth through the fifteenth in Holland, Michigan. Do we have a motion? Anyone volunteering?
I would volunteer to be either a delegate or an alternate. I would also like approval to attend, when I attend MML conventions, either in the spring or in the fall, there is no charge to me because I'm a past president, or there's no charge to the city.
This is an in-state convention, so you actually don't need the formal approval of the, of the commission for that. So do I hear a motion to appoint Commissioner Jenks as our voting delegate, and we can name myself as the alternate, unless someone else would like to be the alternate.
So moved, Mr. Mayor. Second.
All right, any public comment? Any other comment at the commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number four is a matter of considering ordinance to amend chapter thirty-two, street sidewalks and other public places, same thing.
Yeah, just a typo in the actual sidewalk repair ordinance that refers to the incorrect section, so this, this change would make sure that the sidewalk repair ordinance refers to the correct section, and since this is just typographical error, we're recommending that you waive the first reading and adopt it tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve that typographical correction to the ordinance.
Support.
Without public need.
Okay, any comment from the public? Any other comments or questions from the city commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. I, I should comment, and I should've done this at the beginning of the meeting, that Commissioner Iverson is not gonna be with us this evening, but she is excused. Item number five, boards, commissions, and committee appointments.
Yeah, you will recall that at the last meeting, there were two residents that were interested in serving on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, we only had one opening. You made that appointment. Then, based on suggestion from the Environmental Advisory Committee, I reached out to the second applicant to see if she'd be interested in serving on the Environmental Advisory Committee, 'cause we do have a vacancy, and she said that she was interested. So this is a commission appointment to fill a vacancy on the Environmental Advisory Committee.
Mr. Mayor? I'll move that we appoint Bridget McKinley of two six six seven four Humbert Street to the Environmental Advisory Committee, filling a vacancy that presently exists.
Support. Any public comment? Any other comments? This is a term to expire.
I don't have it in front of me. It's, it's filling a, an existing term. I'd have to see when that term expired.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number six, is a matter of considering hiring a part-time code enforcement employee.
Yes, this was an item that has been discussed in the past, was put on the agenda last month, and I was requested to put an estimate together in terms of what I think the cost would be to bring on a contractual employee to work on the weekends, and I had that information in front of you.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I have a question. We, as of this point in time, we don't, there's, have you found anybody who's interested in the position? Is there?
Yes.
Is that person a code officer in another city or something like that?
Yes.
So they're just looking for part-time?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I think the, okay, we should make a motion to that discussion. So I would move that we approve the hiring for a part-time code enforcement- So I would move that we approve the hiring for a part-time code enforcement officer. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see Hazel Park. Saw the agent, lost it, got lost in Huntington Woods, sorry. But I would, I would move that we approve the retention or the hiring of this person. I would suggest that, that it does not need to be a weekly occurrence. It could be twice a month to start with, which should be, give us an indication of, number one, the, the need, and number two, the benefit of having that person. I assume whoever we hire will be hired on that will basis. So I would, I would move that we hire, start by hiring an individual for this position on a, you know, bi, bi-weekly basis, till we see how it goes. Maybe put a ninety-day or a hundred-and-twenty-day limitation, and then review it after that time.
All right, so ninety or a hundred-and-twenty, so four months, review after four months?
Well, we say four months. And that will give us time to evaluate whether or not the, the need is there as we perceive it to be now, and give us an idea as to whether or not the goal is being accomplished.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any comments from the public?
I forgot to give my name and address before. Claire Golet, one zero zero eight four LaSalle. I, I was just curious, is this person going to be doing any code infringement? Number one. Number two, what are we going to do to train this person so that they're familiar with our codes as opposed to the codes in Hazel Park, which may not be the same? Those are, those are two of the things. I'm glad to see that you put a limit on it, because I don't know how you were going to evaluate. And what are you going to evaluate it on? What's going to be the, you know, how are we going to know whether this person is doing a good job, a bad job, something indifferent? Because they catch somebody doing a driveway that doesn't have a permit? Do, because, I mean, what, what are, how are you going to evaluate this person? What constitutes making it worthwhile to have this person?
Our, our intent is that the scope of duties will only be trash and yard waste that are put out early. Any other code enforcement issues that this individual might identify, like lawn grass or blight would be turned over to Hank, our zoning official, who would handle it, because there's a lot more follow-through that needs to be done with those types of violations. So this is only items put out over the weekend for trash or yard waste pickup.
Then I really would like to know why our public safety officers aren't doing this. And to say, well, they don't like to do it, or they don't want to do it, then I think that somebody in that department in particular, the chief, needs to say, this is part of your job. I don't see why we are hiring somebody else to do a job that should be done by public safety.
It, that's interesting. Actually, we don't know, you know, how much public safety is doing, because if they do notify people that trash needs to be taken back because it's put out too early, then it's no longer on the road, and so, you know, we don't know, you know, that there's, there had been an issue there. So this particular individual, this would be an assignment to one individual instead of multiple public safety officers, and we'll be able to track how many instances we have from the beginning, kind of like a baseline, and then check again in four months.
So wait a minute, let me, let me understand. So is this to write tickets? Is the idea that we're going to write tickets and that, that public safety's just been asking people to remove their trash, and that's evil? Or, and therefore we need somebody who will actually write a ticket? Or do we need to tell our public safety officers, don't go knock on the door and have somebody move it off the curb? I, I'm really confused now.
Our policy is still going to be to encourage people to move it in off the curb, not give them a ticket instantly, but, but just as we are doing now.
I really don't understand what this person's going to be doing that supposedly isn't already being done by our public safety officer.
We, we don't know, because there's no tracking in place right now. We don't know how much of that is happening right now, and we don't know if there's follow-up. And we don't have any reporting on it, so this will allow us to gather a lot more information than what we currently have.
For what purpose?
To encourage the beautification of, of the community.
I am still really confused. I am sure that public safety, when they go up to a house and knock on a door and tell people to move their trash, they can put down a little check mark saying that they did it. If all you want is a count of how many people have things at the curb early and are being told to put it back, I cannot imagine hiring somebody to do that. I cannot believe that the, we'll make a little, you can make a little form for them that says, anytime, and say to them, anytime you go to a house and tell them to move their trash, put a little check mark down, and you'll have your statistics. I still do not understand why this cannot be handled by public safety, and why we're hiring someone to do a job that they should do.
That is your opinion? We feel that the results will be much better if we have an individual that is specific to this task, and we'll find that out after reviewing it in four months.
Then apparently, crime in Huntington was just really gone up, because once upon a time, these were the kinds of jobs that our public safety officers did. I guess I'd like to know what's happened, that our public safety officers are so taxed that they can't do this minor job, and we have to hire someone to do it.
Elaine Zach, eighty-three twenty, Hendry Boulevard. I am thrilled that we are trying this. I live on a block where I have a neighbor across the street that consistently puts out whatever garden lawn waste whenever they do it throughout the week. And I've tried to work with Mr. Berry and the police department, and it still keeps continuing, you know, to see that. And I really don't like looking at the yard waste throughout the week, and I understand that, and that is not just one neighbor, but there are multiple neighbors along my block that put things out, so. And I don't want to see it during the week. So I am glad that we're trying to set up some type of system to monitor and take care of this unwanted, the unwanted things that are happening in my immediate neighborhood. So thank you for trying this out.
Any other comments?
David Sloan, eighty-fifty Lincoln in Huntington Woods. Now, does this price, the amount that you quoted, include possibly going to court? Because if people contest a ticket, then that code enforcer, or that, that person has to then go to the Oak Park Court. Will this be including those costs?
Yes. I, I mean, I really estimated the hours, so, but, but the, the duties would include going to court if necessary.
So the estimated hours include?
Yes.
Going to court? Would this person, would you have to pay workers' comp and unemployment? And would this be a W-2 employee or an independent contractor?
Ten ninety-nine.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments from the commission?
Yeah, I want to address what my good friend Claire has just raised, and it is, it is a good point, and I agree with her about it. And since, since the day Claire and I met, I think when my wife was on the beautification committee with her, she and I have had this raging conversation going on for years. And as, as one of the individuals who, you know, has done so much for Huntington Woods in terms of the recycling and so forth, I, I do, you know, she and I have had this discussion. I can't answer what the police do and what the police don't do. I can't answer what I've witnessed over the past eight years, is that it's very difficult for one neighbor to call the police on another neighbor. That is a very difficult thing for people to do, because they're always worried about the ramifications, they're worried about, you know, why'd you call the police on me? You shouldn't have called the police on me. You know, I can do what I want, that kind of thing. It's just, it's an unnecessary situation that, you know, frankly, doesn't need to occur. And I agree completely with Claire about the fact that if an officer is driving down the street and they see a pileup. For example, last weekend, we had a move-out on eleven Mile Road on Saturday. Now, I'm going to, as Claire knows, because of our prior conversations, that ain't pretty. That ain't pretty. And when, if you were having a barbecue, or you were having people over, or something like that, and somebody pulled up to your house and next door, the entire front of the curb from end to end was piled with junk and tables and bags and trash, you, you would be very upset and embarrassed by it. Now, I'm not saying that happens very often anymore. It doesn't, and that's because of the type of ordinances that we've put into place. I would say this, and, and I don't need to speak for my colleague, Allison Iverson, but I, from having discussed this with her in the past, I know that she shares the, the concept here, and, and I share her view that certainly in the beginning of this process, because obviously, one of the questions is, is it revenue positive or is it revenue negative? Doing, even though the amount is very small, negligible. I mean, just, you know, very, very small amount of money that we're talking about here. If, if citations are issued, then obviously, it's revenue positive. The goal here isn't to make money on either a residence not knowing what the ordinance is, or a residence not caring about what the ordinance is. The goal here is to get compliance with very simple ordinance. It says you can't put trash or garbage out until Monday at four o'clock, period. That, that's the goal here. And it's not that you could clean your garage out today, and it's not that the lawn scape company came here today, and it's not that a new refrigerator was delivered today. That's not fair to your neighbors, what you're doing. So this is a limited hundred-and-twenty-day experiment, if you will. I know that Berkeley is exploring the idea of a part-time code person for a weekend, because frankly, a lot of these violations occur on the weekends. That's when they occur. Like I said, people clean out their garage, they do the lawn, whatever, you know. This is not malice or malevolence on the part of individuals. Maybe it is for some, but I doubt that. I think it's just either I didn't know it was that big a deal, or I didn't know, period. I know the city tried, going back a few years ago, as part of the new residence packet, to include specific information about it. I wanted to have on the side of all the recycling bins, a statement about the hours when it could be out and so forth. I thought that would be helpful, but that cost money to do, too. You know, most of these tickets, when they occur, they, they believe come to the city directly on those. Those don't go, but the few that do go to court, and it's only a few, you know, our prosecutor is there, and you know, very frankly, for a ticket, if, if there was a ticket issue, it's fifty dollars, okay? Most people aren't going to spend a lot of time going to the forty-five district court to contest a fifty-dollar ticket. So my hope would be that this person, if, when we do retain them, is that for the first month, that they give no tickets. I don't give a darn what they do. If they go up to the person and say, hey, you know, we got an ordinance here, you can't do that, beautiful. They take it in, mission accomplished, end of story. But I noticed, my son lives in Birmingham, and I've noticed that in Birmingham, there's very active code enforcement on the weekends. They go around in trucks. Now, it's obviously, it's a much bigger city and so forth. They drive around in trucks with flashing yellow lights on them, so people see them. And I favor that here, too. I don't think it needs to be an anonymous thing where somebody's just driving around. You know, there, I'm sure there'll be days that'll look around, they said, I didn't see anything. There may be other days where they found two or three things, but the goal here is simply and positively one thing, is to gain compliance with an ordinance that's intended to keep the streets clean, to keep the city nice, and to make the homes more valuable, period. Nothing more, nothing less. That's why I believe this is a good idea.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner.
I, based on, you know, reading the packet and I saw code enforcement duties, I was in the impression that this individual's responsibilities would be broader than just limited to just trash. And frankly, I'd like to see them, you know, broader. I've, I've had complaints in the past from residents, contractors doing work on a weekend outside of normal hours, or the site was too noisy, or different things. And I'd like this person, I don't want this to just be a residential enforcement. I'd like to also look at, you know, our contractors that may be violating, who are guests in our community, who may be violating things as well on the weekend. You know, our, our public safety officers, it's not really about crime. I mean, our, our public safety officers are involved in welfare checks and ambulance runs, and serving as a peace officer during a custody exchange and whatnot. Our officers are busy doing non-crime related things, and so if we have an individual who can assist in, in both the residential side and with some of these commercial contractors, I'm in favor of it. And, and I think we impress upon this individual what our expectations are for this community. Give you a recent example. There was a home in this community where the grass was over a foot high, and the home had fallen into disrepair. And when I spoke with Hank, our code enforcement officer, about it, he said, I'm working on it. And working on it was not ticketing this individual and harassing this individual under compliance. Working on it was getting this individual help through the city's HARP program and through senior assistance programs. The grass is now cut, the home has been completely repaired, and looks very nice. And, and that was the, the city, rather than ticketing, facilitating this individual where they needed to go. And so we would impress upon this, if we don't write a single, the goal is compliance on a myriad of, of different fronts, not simply trash. And if we get compliance without issuing a single ticket, I'm ecstatic. That's the goal here. And so I want the folks at home to know that this is not anything where we're attempting to generate revenue or, or make this a money maker. It's just attempting to promote compliance. And I know that Amy, or whomever Hank, will sit down with this individual, make sure that they're up to speed on our code of ordinances and how we do business here, and what our expectations are here. Because we may certainly do things different than in Hazel Park, and obviously, our ordinances may be different than Hazel Park. And so I think this is a good trial run, and I'm fully supportive of that. I just would like to see the duties expanded, so that if there are other issues that this individual is aware of, that they're able to deal with it, to keep our public safety officers doing what's important.
It's a good idea. Commissioner Jenks?
Yeah, I'm hearing two things mentioned. One is tracking and gathering statistics, and the second thing is enforcement and code enforcement. And what I hear people saying is, well, for one, two, three months, what we really want to do is track. I don't see paying twenty-six dollars an hour to track.
That, that's not the, the point. The point would be, let's say, the first thirty days when people were advised that their trash is put out too early, keep track of, of how many people were advised. And at the end of four months, if you've got less people that put the trash out, then it's been effective. If, you know, the same number of people put trash out early, then, then it hasn't been effective.
Have we asked public safety to carry out that function as it relates to trash only, as opposed to what Joe was talking about, which is broad technical compliance? In this instance, the, the only technical skill is knowing that on Monday, trash of any type shouldn't be out before four P.M. unless it's brush of a certain size, and then it can go out as early as, I think, Monday morning, whatever. But what Joe was talking about is a broader thing. It's, it's broad code enforcement, and I think that then becomes valuable. I would divide this into two different kinds of ideas. For what is here, as we're relating to control of early put-out of garbage, I would ask public safety, they are, they drive the entire city. They don't randomly function. They don't just work for two or three hours. They work twenty-four-seven. They work on the weekends as well as the weekdays. We are trying to lower the amount of trash that goes out early. And I think what we basically can do is have them record at least who they visit and warn. And if they see that showing up repeatedly, then turn it over to existing code enforcement during the week and at that point in time. Then turn it over to existing code enforcement during the week, and at that point in time, if necessary. Then we figure out a way of code enforcement. Um, our crime level in this city is relatively low. But we don't shut down public safety because of that. And what we're talking about here is making the city look better. I would rather that we start asking public safety to stop and just keep a tab. And let's see if that can change it. Now, if we're talking about broad code enforcement, and not just early garbage, early brush, or people putting. When they dump a house, that's an entirely different story. There should be ticketing. As long as we give people decent notice. But I get nervous with my neighbors now, because we are getting so tight on exactly what you have to do. That I will move garbage cans in. If they're staying out late, 'cause I don't want my, my neighbors mad at me. Um, I just think this needs to be thought out. I need, I think we need to. Or Amy needs a discussion with public safety where we get some information back. I also think we ought to explore at a broader base what Joe was talking about.
The, the idea here is a very focused approach to one particular concern. Rather than ask public safety officers that have multiple responsibilities to be focused on this and all their responsibilities. So this is being assigned to one particular individual, and that's what they're being asked to do. In terms of code enforcement, there are gonna be two types of code enforcement. There are going to be the things that could be handled right now on the spot, like for instance, uh, you know, a nuisance ordinance. Because sidewalks are, are blocked by, uh, a contractor. There are certain code violations that require notice. You have to mail a notice to somebody whose grass is long, and it takes five days to respond. And then there's follow-up. For those types of items, it's not appropriate to have somebody who's working here on the weekends handle those types of items. But when they become aware of them, they will forward them to Hank, who does handle the administrative code enforcement duties, and he will follow up on that. So I agree, things that can be dealt with on the spot where individuals don't necessarily need notification. Or notice that this needs to be corrected can be handled by somebody on the weekends. Those other are gonna have to be handled in-house, because they're, they're more, there's more administrative steps.
Someone dumps an entire house, or someone comes along and kicks someone out. Empties everything out of the house. That occurs on Saturday.
Yes.
What is this code enforcement person going to do? So that it is no longer an eyesore for me? Issue a fifty dollar ticket and that's it?
Those are gonna be handled on a case-by-case basis.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Jenks was here when we changed that ordinance. The city manager has the authority in that instance. If she wants to, under the ordinance, to send a truck and D P W to pick that up and clean it up. There, the ordinance provides for that. In fact, our ordinances provide that anybody who has economic keys to the premises. That could be the real estate agent, that could be the landlord, that could be the lending company, it can be anybody with keys. You, you were here when we did that specifically to deal with these situations, because what you would hear is the landlord would say, well, I didn't know about that. Or that I didn't know anything about, and they always never know anything about it, even when they're moving it out, so. Uh, the point of fact is, I think, I think this is an interesting experiment. It'll, it'll answer the question of whether there's, the, the problem is bigger than we think, lesser than we think. Not a problem, but I agree with Joe that this person needs to be on the lookout for other things, not what they do to enforce it. It's a different issue, like the grass, or for example, another issue we've had lengthy discussions about, which is the blocking of sidewalks. Um, by individuals that have a bunch of cars. I, it's an interesting experiment that we're gonna get answers to for a, you know, very, very nominal amount of money. And, um, in talking with Mr. Barry over the years, I know he personally, as the code officer favors it, he thinks it's a good idea. And I can tell you, if our person that we retain is an experienced code officer, add that to working with Hank and having his input. I think we have, may have the makings of a very good situation. Like I said, I, you know, as, as Commissioner Iverson has indicated. And I agree with, for the first month, no problem, just a casual conversation ends the problem. Because I think once people see that there is serious code enforcement, hey, I guess these people do mean business versus nobody cares. So, uh, I think it'll give us some answers to some questions that Claire raised, uh, some very good questions. And, uh, overall, we'll see what the real situation is.
So if this person sees somebody parking across the sidewalk, um. Are they to call public safety that time, that day?
They can tell him, you know, there's a, an ordinance, and I can, which prohibits that, you think you, you know, you maybe wanna think about that, and this has come up.
If they, if they choose not to move.
Oh, well, then it's a public safety. I don't want a code enforcement officer engaging anybody on the street.
No, but it would be clear to this person that if, if they ask someone, move your car, and they don't do it, that then. They need to contact, and that that should be noted, that they contacted public safety. And somebody will follow up to make sure that public safety.
And as you, and as you, and as you know, uh, uh, you know, access the sidewalks. For people who have, uh, ambulation issues and things like that, as we discussed walking up here tonight, which I'll say for new business. Is very serious business. It's not just an inconvenience, and we've had this discussion here about in the winter months. For people who walk their dogs and things like that, you know, if you have to walk down a driveway and it's icy and things like that. You are put at grave risk of very serious injury or harm. And, um, uh, being in the senior category myself now, and taking a header off some steps in Washington, D.C. Two weeks ago, I can assure you, I'm most empathetic to that scenario. But what we're, I guess, there's a lot to be said for what everybody said here. We're looking for empirical data, and this way, we're gonna get it. And for a very low dollar sum. And like I said, at the end of four months, we may decide, hey, we don't have a big issue here. Or we may decide that this is something that public safety should be doing. But we've had the discussion about public safety. You and I have been having this conversation, Claire, for years, and it's always the same.
Can I, since the packet included a section about signs.
We have a motion on the floor before we get into the, uh, to the signs. So we're gonna, we're gonna do that first.
To hold that thought.
All right, any other comments?
Yes.
Yes.
Very brief. Um, this, I disagree with the idea, but the cost is roughly four hundred to six hundred dollars. In a two million dollar budget, I don't think we're gonna upset the apple cart by supporting it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. There was a, a second, uh, question, and this was, was more of a direction from the city commission for our, um, city manager. Uh, regarding lawn signs and, uh, and their placement in the city right-of-way.
Currently, it's, um, unlawful to place any kind of a sign in the right-of-way, the area between the street and the sidewalk. However, my understanding is, the policy has been that signs that are promoting nonprofit. Um, events get a pass, and they're allowed to be placed in the right-of-way. So I was looking for some guidance from the city commission, if you wanted to continue with that policy, if you're comfortable with that. Or did you want some consistent enforcement of the sign ordinance with regards to placement in the right-of-way?
Commissioner Rozell.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's, uh, you know, an equity issue, and frankly, all the signs need to be treated the same. There's a reason they shouldn't be in the road right-of-way, could boil down to a safety issue as well. Uh, so I, I think that these signs, if possible, should be moved, uh, to between the sidewalk and the home, so that they're in the right-of-way. If they find their way back, then they can be collected and, and kept, uh, at city hall for a certain period of times. Be retrieved or eventually disposed of, but, um, I, I just think that, uh, we get, we go down a slippery, slippery slope. If, uh, we start exempting certain types of signs and that type of thing. One of the things we can regulate, the signage, and not sort of get down that First Amendment area, has to do with the road right-of-way. Because of, um, certain safety issues related to that, being able to see and see individuals on a sidewalk. See while you're turning your vehicle at an intersection, et cetera. So, I think it's, uh, if you're asking for my opinion as a commissioner here, I think that the first, uh, instinct should be to have the code enforcement move it. So that it is no longer in the road right-of-way, and it is between the sidewalk and the home. And, uh, if it continues to be, uh, back in the road right-of-way, then the sign can just be removed and kept here at city hall. And then if it's not retrieved after a certain period of time, just disposed of.
I, I also agree that we should be consistent in our enforcement, and that we should not allow any signs in the cities right-of-way. I think that if the sign, and I, and I don't know exactly how we do this, but if the sign relates to a commercial business. Whether it's mattresses for a hundred and fifty bucks.
Regular customers for that.
Can those legally just be picked up?
Yeah, they're not supposed to be in the right-of-way, yeah.
I mean, uh, if it's an obvious sign, uh, promoting, uh, whether it's something doing a Met Club auction, or, uh.
Tin can.
Tin can auction, or some other community type of event, and move that back behind the sidewalk, I think that's a great policy.
I would think for those community events, that the people would be more than willing to have it on the other side of the sidewalk.
Correct.
Well, and I think it becomes difficult to decide what community event gets special treatment. And what community event does not. It's good to be consistent. That consistency would be, the right-of-way has no signs.
Yeah, and I think it's easy to tell the difference between commercial versus non-commercial.
Into somebody's yard.
Right.
That, that to me is a pretty obvious.
When I placed a political sign between the sidewalk or someone helping me. And the curb in many cities, it was just picked up and I could go someplace and retrieve it. Within a certain period of time.
Yeah, it's called sacra.
If you place, if you place a sign illegally, I'd.
No, a lot of, a lot of times what they did, at least with political signs, was they would, uh, keep them in one place for a period of time.
That was just yours, Mr. Jenks.
Be careful, sir.
All right, I appreciate the, uh, feedback on that.
Okay.
No, no action is needed.
Okay.
No motion.
Item number six, A, we added to the agenda.
Yes, this cont- concerns the, uh, vacant parkland, uh, at eleven mile in Humber. There was, uh, motion by the city commission to sell it to the neigh- neighbor that was adjacent to it. After a lot of, uh, legal work, we have, uh, decided that it's not possible to sell it because it's planted as a park. So, uh, I'd like to ask the commission to, uh, amend their motion. And authorize the signing of an easement, so that the neighbor could use the property for the purposes of expanding their driveway. Or improving their driveway, instead of selling it to them outright.
So move.
Second.
Any, uh, comments from the public? Any, any other comments or questions from the commission?
No, just to indicate that this is a matter we've been dealing with for some time, trying to accommodate the homeowner who's doing everything right. They wanna improve the property, they wanna make it look better, they maintain it, they fertilize it, they water it. And that the, uh, possibility of simply conveying it to them for a price just doesn't work. We had discussions in the past about complete inability to get an appraisal on this. We had a whole discussion about this here last winter. Um, and again, the homeowner's been more than patient, very cooperative, and has continued to do what she's been doing all along, take care of the property. So I see this conveying of, uh, easement as a very, uh, simple, easy way to, uh, take care of the situation. It's good for the city, it's good for the homeowner, I support it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have, uh, two sets of reports and minutes. We have a motion to receive and file.
So move.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Reports and minutes are received and filed. Warrant number three twenty-seven, do I have a motion to approve subject to full audit?
So move.
Good. Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number nine is a closed session. This is a, a motion that will require a roll call vote. It's a matter of, uh, considering, uh, recess session, recessing in a closed session pursuant to M C L fifteen dash two sixty-eight. Immediately following the regular city commission meeting to discuss city of Huntington Woods and city of Pleasant Ridge versus the city of Oak Park. And forty-fifth District Court, Division of the State of Michigan jointly and severally, and also discuss union negotiations. We have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
So move.
You're a roll call for this, don't you?
Yeah, motion first, though. There was a lot of, did you get that?
Not a motion, no seconds.
What are you gonna do? Everybody's a, everybody's a parliamentary.
We got three movers.
Everybody's a parliamentary.
Nobody's staying, everybody's moving.
You got something there, Joy? We're good?
Jenks and Olson second.
Okay. Mr. Mayor Protown?
For, oh, aye.
Commissioner Jenks.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, we will reconvene, uh, with a two-minute break after the close of the city commission meeting.
And we will not need to go back into open session afterwards.
Will not be reconvening. Uh, city managers, report.
I just have a couple of announcements from the recreation department. Uh, pool hours through Labor Day are weekdays noon to eight thirty. Weekends are eleven A M to eight thirty. The fall edition of the city's newsletter is available online. You can also get a hard copy at the front desk of the recreation center, if you don't wanna wait for your copy to be mailed to you. And then the recreation center will be closed as usual for two days in August, the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh for floor maintenance. And then the only other item I'd like to, uh, announce is that we found out today that we received a three thousand dollar grant. To go toward the purchase of city street trees from the D N R.
All right. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the city manager? County or commissioners' remarks. Commissioner Jenks, why don't you start us off with some short remarks?
I, uh, attended last week a, uh, funding of cities presentation.
Save my city.
What?
Save my city.
Save my cities.
Save M I.
So did we all.
Yes.
Um, what's important about that is, and a lot of people misunderstand, when a new house is built. And that pays full taxes, the city does not recognize the benefits of that or of major, um. Additions. What happens is, everybody's taxes are lowered. So that our total city revenue follows the pattern of five percent or inflation. Um, one of the things that this group, Save, uh, Michigan, Save My Cities, is working at. Is trying to take at least that cap off. So, without your taxes being changed, except by inflation or five percent, whatever is lower. The city could recognize the wonderful growth and value of sales in our city. And, uh, rebuilds. Uh, most people think that when there's a new home built, that adds to the city. And it really doesn't. Anyway, uh, reminded of a colleague of mine. Uh, if you've got a bike, put lights on it at night, use reflect. Use reflective vests. You can get reflective tape from public safety. Uh, be safe. There're gonna be a lot of kids that are out during the rest of this month and a lot of people walking and running in the middle of the night where you can't see them.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
I have no additional comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Rozelle?
Uh, just, uh, I also attended the Save My City. I know the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem Oldsmen were there as well. I attended this morning going in Ferndale. I thought it was informative, and we find ourselves in the perfect storm, if you will, of municipal, uh, finance posed on us by state legislature. Um, I also had a occasion to meet, uh, with someone from Consumers Energy, who happens to be a Huntington Woods resident. And, uh, we've been, uh, communicating by email, and consumers, uh, would like to come out to, uh, a subsequent city commission meeting to discuss the, uh, gas line, uh, and service line replacement project that's occurring. So, uh, in the process of facilitating that, and so hopefully we can have consumers out to kinda, uh, keep the residents informed as to, uh, what's going on with that. As Commissioner Oldsmen and I have, uh, discussed, uh, there's nothing good about an old gas line. Uh, so it's a good thing that they're doing it, but, uh, uh, just do a good job of keeping our folks informed as to the status of the project and what commu- what the streets, I should say, are, are up next, et cetera. So, uh, those are all my comments. Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. I'll just, uh, finish with, uh, hoping and wishing everyone a safe and healthy and happy Labor Day weekend, and we'll see everyone, uh, next month. Thank you.